Church of God in the youth group, she has stepped up in the last year and has been doing some amazing things with the youth in the children's ministry. She is the sister of Jenna Littleton also, who graduated at Madison two years ago. And she is a very precious, genuine, and hardworking young lady. And we appreciate you being here to do the prayer for us tonight, Millie. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All stand up.
Alright, so if we could just bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together today. I pray for the leaders and board members here who work so hard to make our schools a better place. With them wisdom, patience, and heart to do what's best for every student. Help us all to work together in kindness and respect and let every decision made tonight honor you. Bless the board members, staff, and students, and keep our schools safe and full of your love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Millie.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay. You going to jump down here to the agenda? Is there any amendments to the agenda? Have an amendment? If we're not, so, here a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Knight, to adopt the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Alright. 4.1 consent agenda is 4.1 minutes, 4.2 fundraising, 4.3 curriculum, 4.4 PACE, P A P C, professional learning catalog, 4.5 small school district council consortium, 4.6 top two grant approval, 4.7 C E R P 2025-26 reading plan. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm going to accept that consent agenda.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Knight to approve the consent agenda item. Is there any discussion on any of the agenda? If none, all in favor? 4.4, zero. Alright, alright, and the consent, travel, and trips consideration. 5.1 is the staff travel, 5.2 is the field trip request. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent, travel, and trips consideration?
I move to approve the consent, travel, and trips.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knight. Any discussion on the staff travel or the field trip request?
I would just like to point out that the staff travel is being paid for from E S A.
If not, any more discussion? All in favor of consent, travel, and trips consideration? Page in. All opposed? You raising for which one? Approve or? Four zero. Alright, Ms. Copeland, come on up. The agenda items, talking about 6.1, adult education contract with Ms. Sharon Fletcher.
Good evening, how are y'all tonight? First item we have, 6.1 is a renewal of contract with Chair Fletcher, adult ed program. And the meat and potatoes of the contract, it's $30 an hour, not to seed, 12 hours per week. And these are services that are held at the Career Source Florida location down there. So, if you have any questions on that contract, we'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion for, to approve the adult education contract with Ms. Sharon Fletcher?
Mr. Chair, I mean that we approve the adult education contract with Ms. Sharon Fletcher.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Thompson for approval of the education contract with Ms. Sharon Fletcher. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions or anything? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Alright, 6.2, job description. Ms. Copeland?
Yeah, this is the job description that we discussed in our workshop and such. Coordinator of Special Projects, this would be taking the place of the Bridge A B position that was out there prior. And again, keep in mind that there's no movement in salary here. It's a level position. It's essentially adding some duties to the role, especially with the Public Information Officer type of duties, risk management, investigations, and such. And it would be a district level position that I feel is much needed. So, we're proposing that for y'all's consideration and approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the job description for the Coordinator of Special Projects.
Okay. Have a motion by Ms. Knight for approval of the job description for Special.
Second.
Now, the second by Ms. Hagan. Any discussion on this? Any questions for Mr. Copeland or anybody? If not, all in favor? Ms. Hagan, you good or? All in favor? Alright, that's four, four zero. Alright, 6.3, staffing allocation plan update.
Again, this is the follow back up on the staffing allocation changes that we're proposing for consideration by the board. Essentially, Madison County High School would convert one 12-month A P position to an 11-month dean position.
I don't have that in my minutes.
Let me see.
Three minutes here.
You got your number in?
Did you find it, Ms. Hagan?
I'm going to pull it up for her.
I've inhabited my, so that I still can go over it until each minute.
Sorry.
Because it was in the notes, so that's why you couldn't see it. That way you can read it now.
Yeah, it's too late now. Go ahead, thank you.
Again, convert 12-month A P position to 11-month dean position. The high school proposed, this would be a cost savings of approximately $15,000 before the benefits, so you'd get a little more than that. Also, this would take into account the move of the Bridge A P that we discussed, or I guess we just approved with the job description, moving that position to a district level coordinator of special projects position. The second portion of these proposed changes would be the changes at the central school. And this would be going from three A Ps and two deans to two A Ps and four deans at the central school. And this would be a cost savings of approximately $17,000, not including the, over, the benefits also. So, it would be a little more than that. Again, we're proposing this for y'all's consideration.
Okay.
Is, are there any?
I have some discussion on this, Mr. Chair. As I said before in all the other meetings, we have a new principal at the high school. We're eliminating that assistant principal at the high school. We're eliminating that assistant principal at the Bridge. The only assistant principals we will be having now is at the central school. I think that we are setting the new principal up for failure. She's a new person, new at the school, doesn't know anything about the schools. So, and as I said, the principal has to do all the employees out there. And eliminating this vice principal position for a dean, I don't care what statements that there are, this lady's being set up for failure. She doesn't know anybody in the community, she doesn't know the children, nobody and nothing. She's brand new. She might have the credentials, of course, as I said, she got the job, but should have the cooperation of the community, of knowing people, knowing the staff. And as you said, well, you can get somebody up here from the county office, but then that's adding to their job, where they be getting raises and whatever. And they don't have enough to do that they got to go out there? And then somebody at the county office doesn't even know all these people out here, as you said, Barbara Thomas does, but I doubt that very seriously, with all the new employees that we have out there. Saying myself, that I discussed this in the workshop, so nobody knows, this is nothing new with me, so I've had my say. And the public is very concerned about it, setting it up for failure.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, to accept the staffing allocation plan?
I move to approve the staffing allocation plan updates.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Knight to accept the staffing allocation plan update. Is there any more discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Okay.
So, in taking into your concerns, Ms. Hagan, all of our district staff, with the exception of Mr. Copeland, because his job description did not, his required CPA. So, all of our district staff do have ed leadership. We are actually putting together forms right now, so that our district staff can go and evaluate of both schools.
And of course, I don't see how they can evaluate these people when they are not on campus. They have their own duties and own responsibilities that they have to do. So, what are they going to do? Go out there to the high school and just spend half of their day there and get to know the people so that they can evaluate these people?
Actually, Ms. Hagan, we're, our staff are on site a lot more.
And that doesn't justify anything, that just giving other people more duties and responsibilities.
But we'll, we have.
And I'm not pleased with what you're trying to explain to me. So, you have your take on it, I have my take on it. The community have their take on it too, and you will see.
I would also like to point out, as I stated, when I worked in Taylor County, this was done.
This is not Taylor County, this is Madison County. So, don't try to justify it to me, because Madison County is different from Taylor County.
If I may finish.
Let her finish, Ms. Hagan.
This was also done previously in Madison.
This is Carol's dialogue, not whatever. When she's speaking, I'm replying, it's a dialogue.
I know that, but if she's speaking, then if you're speaking, then nobody can hear it.
When she said something and I can't reply?
Yes, you can, once she gets, once she gets finished, Ms. Hagan.
But anyway, I'm finished with it anyway. I don't have anything else to say, because I made my points, and I was, that's what I needed to say. And the community hears it, they have placed upon me to speak, and I was elected to do this. And if the community hadn't said anything anyway, I don't agree with it anyway, so I'm through.
Thank you for your concerns, but I did want to point out that district staff have gone into the schools and evaluated before. So, this is not a new concept for our schools. So, but it is noted that we have new district staff and we have new school staff. That is noted, I do appreciate that.
Alright, any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Three, one, with Ms. Hagan opposed. Okay, let's go, personnel changes. Ms. Copeland?
Yeah, you'll see the one page of the personnel changes, instructional employee recommendations, non-instructional, and then some employee resignations. Pretty straightforward. Anyone have any questions, I will answer them or find the answer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the personnel changes.
Have a motion to accept personnel changes by Ms. Knight. Have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion on the personnel changes?
I do. Now, the personnel changes, when we were in the workshop before these jobs were created, superintendent made the, the board, superintendent requests for jobs, the board approved these jobs. And before these jobs were approved, we had so many other people, the dean had already been placed, all those positions had been filled now, as it was asked by Ms. Gibson, will these jobs be advertised?
Yes, ma'am, they will. They're just, they're just interim.
Because they were filled when you all brought them to us already. They were, they were filled.
They're just interim.
Interim?
Mm-hmm.
Well, see, well, that was quick to the trial, wasn't it, when the jobs wasn't even approved? And you, you had created these jobs and approved these jobs, and had filled these jobs, that's very unfair. Interim, whoever it is.
From my understanding, the dean position is a instructional position. Therefore, instructional positions was, was advertised?
No, it was not. This is a newly, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Chair, this was a newly created position. And since it was a newly created position with the other positions, it could not have been advertised. People listen to these board meetings?
I'm glad they do.
Know at one time, you wouldn't.
I'm proud they listen. Thank y'all for listening.
I would like to point out, there, there's two interventionists that are only going to work part-time, that's the reason their salary is less, and it shows they are part-time. So, they're technically filling the slot of one full-time interventionist. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, now, are you saying though, that the ones that we approved tonight, the positions we approved tonight will be advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
So, these are the only ones?
If not?
These are the only ones that I would be voting for, the one that we have right here now.
Right.
And those newly created job positions are not on here and have not been advertised?
And they'll be advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Alright. Uh, I need, we already had our.
We haven't.
Okay, all in, all in favor of the personnel changes? Raise your hand. Four zero. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Alright.
So, Mr. Copeland, one thing that I need to ask you.
Yes, I may.
And you've been saying yourself, we need to tighten our belts and whatever. So, this shows, you know, all these new positions that we're creating and whatever. And we had a healthy sunburns when we came in here, and now we're looking at whatever's going to be given to us and what's not going to be given to us. So, I thank you, because every meeting we talk about, we need to tighten our belts. So, I thank you for that, and please keep a good watch. Thank you. Our student enrollment at the high schools, way down. So, you look at that central school, and you see how many, it's almost 1,000 students at the central school and 400 at the high school. Where are these children going? And it's a pattern. And this pattern doesn't look well. They are not going to the high school, and the proof, proof is on paper. Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item for individual consideration, 7.1, class wallet renewal.
So, this is our annual renewal for the class wallet. This is how we disperse the teacher leave money to our teachers. We use class wallets, so I do ask for your approval.
Okay.
We've already submitted the first round, and I believe they started on the second round, submitted a second round. I know the first round of teacher leave money went out.
Does this platform work later than the prior years?
Right.
It tracks their expenditures for the auditors.
Right. Alright, do I have a motion for the class wallet renewal?
I move to approve the class wallet renewal.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson. I have a second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Knight. Is there any discussion on the class wallet renewal? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Okay, 7.2, North Florida Child Development, Madison County School District, M O U.
So, I have an update for you. I did have a meeting with Ms. Gaskin, and shared, and went over the agreement with her. She didn't know the significant changes I made. She is agreeable to the changes.
But I haven't seen the changes.
That I presented in the, in the draft copy to when we did.
When we did the workshop.
And then you stated.
That's what I'm saying, that was in the workshop.
Yes.
And you know, it's discussed in the workshop, there's no voting on anything in the workshop.
No.
So, then whatever has been approved now, we need to see the original copy of it.
So, you also asked that you would not vote on it until their board approved it. So, I'm waiting to receive that back. So, I'm just providing an update.
Okay.
So, I should have it received back for us to vote on during our next meeting. So, I'm just.
So, she hasn't presented anything?
Not to us, but she was agreeable to all the changes that we went through in the workshop.
What about that last contract that we've not received from her? And we said we wouldn't proceed until we received that contract from her.
I received one from Ms. Brown, but not from her.
Well, see, that's exactly what happened to her, she's not the CEO. Ms. Brown is just over that center out there. So, then we decided in that workshop, that until we get that particular contract too, that we wouldn't decide on anything. So, have she, have you got that?
No. She did email me about 4 o'clock this afternoon, and stated that she would be coming to pick up the buses, since, because of the transportation issue.
Mm-hmm. So, that, what they had given us previously?
Correct, yes, I am.
She's coming, and she's taking it away.
Going to repurpose them somewhere else.
Well, we have been transporting the children based on the fact that that bus was in our fleet. Fleet, and now it's being removed.
So, Bus 2 is not being used at all.
Okay.
Because it has not been used in two years.
And it's all rest.
That's one of the mechanical issues, but the new school bus?
So.
Is that the one that's too small to house our children?
Bus 6 is the one, I think it's Bus 6, is one we do use.
Right.
For like a field trip, something like that.
Right.
So, but it, it's a 55, and we need a larger.
And so, she's planning to come get that one as well?
I've emailed and responded to her and told her we want to keep that one, because we do use that one if one of ours is on the field trip.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's part of the terms and conditions of what we are giving is in kind, and if, if that condition is changing, so is ours.
So, yeah, so we'll see what, what her response is. She did not respond to my 4 o'clock email.
You got to give and take, not just take.
Well, we agreed to only extend transportation until today.
Correct.
So, that is the issue at hand.
I have not received an email since my 4 o'clock email.
Well, then, here's the thing, until the next board meeting, we, these children are our children.
That's right.
Their parents pay taxes here.
Correct.
Even though they are under her program, so we need to get these children to school.
Well, and I think, yeah, sorry.
And then, when we do a final plan, then we'll know what to do and how to do it, but you make sure that she understands that we're not pleased with her.
Yeah, and like I said in the last board meeting, I, this is the game to me, that it appears that she's been playing. We kick the can down the road so that I can get it, and we'll just keep extending it, because we don't want to take away from the children.
And hold us over a barrel?
Exactly. So, I feel like, you know, if we're going to extend this until the next board meeting, where hopefully we will have a contract, you know, if not, you know, I, we need to, how do we make these our children? That's, that's where we're at, you know, like, we can't just.
Then we don't provide transportation at all, so they'll have to enroll with us.
So, let me get, let me ask you this question. Can we get with legal and see what we can have done with her, not with?
I'm sure Mr. Snickner cannot answer those questions, so he would.
Well, I know, that's why I say, can we get?
He would love it if we would wait.
Can we get with legal?
Yes.
And see what can be done, because this lady's being so unfair, then these are our children.
I can.
We need to get these children here, we need to educate the children.
Correct.
And can we file complaints against her with her board and with the state, and just take these children?
Yeah.
We know we can ask for the contract for next year.
That's one of that.
But she's not being fair this year, and she's not being fair to us as to the children that she's not being fair. So, she need to be put on notice, and I'm very displeased in the community too.
Yeah.
And all of them still at me about the children can't come to school, then whatever, can't catch a bus. I, and I'm tired of all of those. I'm tired of not going to Win-Dixie.
Yes, I am.
And I can't just ride on my little scooter, and I, and I got to stop and talk to everybody. Well, it's a pleasure talking to y'all, but I'm just saying they're so upset, and it's upsetting to me.
I agree with that.
I will call Mr. Tom in the morning before our, our training.
Well, what she's doing, she's holding our kids as.
Correct.
She's holding them hostage.
Hostage arrest.
Exactly, these are our children. You have to look out for them.
And we're trying not to punish the parents and the children, and, you know, I, I think it just becomes very frustrating, because you have a director who's fighting harder for the program and for the children than you do the person who should be here representing them.
And we can get Ms. Brown and bring Ms. Brown right on in.
Exactly.
With, with our school and whatever, with those children to the center out there, we're housing those children, we're giving them so many, much service and whatever. And she's using those children as a weapon against us.
I will say amen to that.
I believe, and I believe this, that they looking for a way to get out anyway, because we the last one away from, they and we will hit you good.
That would be pleasing to us, so we can get the children, we can get the money.
But, you know, she knows, but another thing, going back to last year's contract, if she, if they owe us money, and it was in that contract, then them, those are going to need to be paying us.
That's exactly, we ask for that money.
I mean, they, and I don't, I'm, I'm not saying.
We need to serve a notice.
That we're not going to do something with our kids, but legally look like to me, if you sign a contract, you, you have to give.
Well, that's why she's not sending her copy of the contract.
But that's okay.
So, anyway.
We know what we said and what we did.
Are we going to vote?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to.
No, because there's nothing to write off.
Oh, no, I'm going to vote to extend.
We need to extend the services.
Extend the transportation.
We need to extend it. So, I would move to, to extend the transportation and food services to North Florida Child Development temporarily until the next board meeting.
Until they.
Which will be September, what?
Let's look.
18.
18.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Ms. Hagan, to extend the transportation and food service to the North Florida Community, North Florida Child Development, kids for, till the next board meeting of September 18th. Any more discussion on that?
Yes, sir.
All approved? Five zero. Four zero, I'm sorry. Alright, alright, alright. Superintendent items.
So, I have a few things for you this evening. One, I know there's been several issues with our van director. I've spoken to someone, so I've arranged for a mentor to work with our van director. He will also be provided a school-based mentor, as well as a mentor through F B A. So, we're trying to get him moving in the right direction and our right path. I know he was sick during our last football game, there were some parents that were unhappy about that. And so, I, I think there's germs going around in our community, so I'm not discounting that he was not ill or anything. So, just be mindful that, you know, yes, he was out sick, so. Master board begins tomorrow at 10 o'clock, so please remember to be here. We'll have our, first of our two-hour sessions, and I'm sure we'll schedule another session after that.
One question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I know whether to eat breakfast or not?
I will, I will get pastries, I will get little donuts for everybody.
Donuts for lunch?
For breakfast.
I want no breakfast, I want lunch.
We're only scheduled till noon. So, I do want to point out, because I know there's been an issue, statutory, so I have our student counts, and I have last week, and I've started this week. So, you'll notice our numbers are fluctuating. We did pull the numbers out of the high school, most of them have come from the high school, but I also pulled them out, they've also been pulled from the central school, and those children are now being pulled into waitlink. So, that's one drop with our high school numbers. But the central school has also been dutyfully trying to track every single child that has not come, the 340 kids that have not come from Greenville, mainly Morley and Pineda. We, I can tell you where every child is from Greenville. 99% of them are at the central school, two moved to Georgia.
ninety-nine percent are, are at the central school. Two moved to Georgia, one moved to Taylor County, two of them are at Creative Arts. Other than that, they are at the central school. We have accounted for every single child. Uh, we have to know every one of those children, their whereabouts because of our three-year commitment for following those children because of our top. So children that have not been in school whatsoever since day one, we have a statutory authority to track those children. We have the truancy guidelines that we have to follow. So our staff have been steady calling parents. It's not that we're harassing parents in any way. We have a duty and an obligation to find out where your child is if you have not put your child in school. Um, so just because, you know, on Thursday and then Friday, um, of our one thousand forty-three, Thursday we had one thousand nine, Friday we had nine hundred and forty-three. So we have illness. That doesn't mean only nine hundred and forty-three of the one thousand forty-three were in attendance. Not every child is going to be in school every single day. It's those kids that have not been in school. They've been trying to account for their whereabouts. Um, we did find out there was, um, one set of, uh, one family that had moved out of state, but we still have to call and verify because they did not withdraw properly. So we're trying to track these children and withdraw them the correct way. So, um, you'll start to say, we're trying to really clean up our enrollment records and verify where every student is. But we have a statutory authority to do that. So just please be mindful as we work through this process. And if parents should call you to tell you, we are harassing them, we are not harassing them. We're not trying to force them to come. Um, but we're to the point now where so many days, it's fixing to be that we have to send the truancy officer to their house.
Who is that truancy officer? Who is that person?
Uh, Mitt Gonzales starts with it. And then we also will send the SROs out. So, the SROs, or SRDs, I should say.
So is that in your contract? Is that in the SRO's contract?
SRDs, yes.
Whoever. Is that in your? You've been doing it for years. But, but you've been doing it.
So, um, the, you remember this nice big ream of paper? I made it out for you to read. You needed to only read the first like twenty pages. That was the full after-action report. We have three public records report, uh, requests that we need to respond to. They are actually wanting all the, um, actual testing results. And so we're trying to get this completed report and we want to publish this online. So you've had time to review it. I have not received the first call comment or anything about our nice lengthy report. But we, I would like the board to accept the report so we can post it and share it online for everyone. Um, as you recall, we did receive our health, um, certificate that we passed. So I would like the board to accept the report so that we can get it posted and then we can share the entire report with those three, um, public records request and respond to those.
How do I do that?
Ask for a motion to accept the report so we can post it online.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Get a motion to amend the agenda to add this to your agenda.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I would, uh, request to amend the agenda to add the, uh, after-action report for the mold remediation for the Madison County Central School and Madison County High School.
What's the name of that report?
Okay.
After-action.
I've got, I got, I got, uh, amendment.
Does anyone need a, in?
To, uh, the agenda, so we'll make that seven point three?
They gave that to us. Is that two weeks ago?
Oh, it's on my table?
Yeah, yeah, you should have that.
If it is the after-action.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody good with that?
I got it.
All in favor of doing that, amending it? Four zero. Okay.
I have it, Ms. Richardson. I have it.
Okay, now I need a motion. Katie, make it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I would move to, uh, accept the after-action report for the mold remediation for Madison County Central School and Madison County High School.
My second.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion by Ms., uh, Knight, and a second by Ms. Thompson to accept the, uh, after-action plan, um, report, after-action report for the mold at the, at we have Central and Madison County High School. Is there any discussion on that?
Um, I just wanted to comment, after, you know, reading over it and, um, obviously, you know, being out there and, you know, reviewing things, um, I, I just think one of the things that we need to make sure that we're making a priority is obviously the cleanliness of these classrooms. Um, you know, a lot of the issues were, you know, drinks spilled everywhere and food left everywhere and things that, you know, don't necessarily belong in the classroom. So I, I just want to make sure that we're tightening up on our, you know, policies and our expectations and standards of cleanliness in the classroom to avoid this in the future.
That's actually already being addressed and you'll receive further information on that after Mr. White has met with both principals.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor? Four zero.
Um, the last thing I do want to make sure I point out, I, I need, as board members, please be mindful, the recording is still staying on. Um, there were comments that were recently made during, um, our last board meeting that were streamed when a board member was talking about, um, two staff members and salaries. And so just be mindful of what's said, um, when you're talking about certain people being in certain positions. So just be very mindful because it's all on that recording.
What do you mean by certain people in certain positions? Are we limited to what we can say, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the public's just heard what was said. That's all. The public's just heard what was said.
There was a hot mic moment in our brief intermission where.
Okay, well, I need to, you know, I need to be clarified what you're talking about.
During the recess meeting.
I don't know anything about what you're talking about.
We, we had a, we had a hot mic moment with somebody sitting at the dais.
Well, see, I, I, I don't know about that.
It's all.
It was never told to me.
Yeah, there was multiple comments, you know, in a negative manner about board members and staff members. Um, so it's, uh, it's definitely something that we need to be cognizant of, you know, and we need to better represent ourselves when we're sitting here. So we can, we can all agree to disagree, but we still have to be professionals. And, you know, when we're sitting at this dais, we need to be mindful of that.
Since everybody knows about it, does it mean that you all are talking about it? Cause I don't know about it. Does it mean?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of these microphones stay on. And so everything that's being said, everybody hears.
Yep. Amen.
So, that's all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Attorney, got anything?
Nothing for me.
Sure?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
We appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be with you.
All right, Ms. Hagan.
Justin, thank you.
Knight?
Uh, no, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Millie for coming in doing our prayer this morning. Um, she jumped in last minute. We had a, a student that wasn't able to attend, so I appreciate her jumping in and, uh, and, uh, filling the void. Um, I am just very excited for the energy that's still flowing in the district, um, in the district office and in the schools. Um, I love the energy and, uh, I am just excited for what this school year is going to bring. So, um, I just appreciate everybody and everything they're doing.
Ms. Thompson?
I just would like to say that I encourage each of you, if you can, go watch our Bronco football team. They have their first home game tonight. And I want to thank all of our staff for everything you do every day to make our schools and our district a better place.
Is it?
That's all.
I, I'd just like to thank you of all of our staff and, and our kids. I'd like to thank them for, for doing their thing in the classrooms and, and, uh, and I'd like to thank each and every one of y'all, cause I know what all y'all go through with it.
Amen.
So I appreciate y'all. Appreciate you, Ms. Carroll. Appreciate everybody over on that side of the world, over there. We appreciate them, uh, uh, SRDs.
SRDs.
What's, what's the SRD stand for?
School Resource Deputy.
Ah.
Deputy. They're not officers, they're deputies.
Deputies now.
We appreciate y'all.
We sure do.
Cause y'all do a lot too. Cause I was in Tallahassee.
I'm gonna brag on that one over there. He, he got, helped me out of a sticky situation the other day. I was walking out of the school and there was a snake crawling by my feet.
I thought you got a gun, you can shoot them snakes.
I can't shoot them at the school.
She can't carry a gun on school property.
He got loose from the science lab.
Oh, don't have to worry about that one anymore. Okay.
All right. This meeting's gonna be adjourned then.
Thank you.